Something when you're going to a restaurant or something, you get a drink.
You see Mr. Gary Kipman down there, Santa Claus. Well, somebody on Facebook commented was, "Your brother looks like Santa Claus." Right up there. So is the mayor of Santa Claus, do you?
They crown him like this. It almost never ceases to appease him. They'll push him out.
And they all want it instead. They all want it.
Oh, so. Thanks now.
Jean, you're going in the bathroom.
Did Jean?
Where are you?
You're bad, too.
Let's see that.
Neither.
No, my husband.
We get the big cheers.
What's that?
We get the big cheers.
Yes.
Your husband looking under there, his son.
Yeah.
And then that's when we two guys add ourselves.
Okay, uh, it is now six thirty. Meeting's ordered. We don't need to roll call here, do we?
Yeah.
Like, uh, let's see. So, Ariel, will you please pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to your cause. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheers. We don't have an indication tonight, so I'd like to, uh, uh, put an indication in this meeting.
Well, I was gonna do that at the end, but I would like to have this meeting adjourned in the name, not that we're gonna do it right now, adjourned in the name of Dan Haggerty, Don's son, who died. And, uh, so I'd like to record the show that.
And, uh, you know, pray for you and your family and, uh, hope that everything goes well for you and ensure your son's in a better place. Okay, uh, approval of the agenda. Is, uh, are there any items to add? Any items?
They are all. We'll go ahead and remove closed session from the end of the meeting after that. It may be necessary.
Okay. Is there a motion, a second to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a first, first.
We have a first?
First, we have a first.
Remove approval of the agenda.
Now, you have a second, John. Let's give you a second.
I'll second you.
Okay. It's been, uh, it's been seconded to approve the agenda. On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Post, uh, pardon? No, no post. I'll take the lead and have that restated. Are there any public comments? Does anybody in the audience wish to speak about any item on the agenda tonight? Hearing, no one wanting to speak at this point in time. We'll move on. Public hearings. We do have a public hearing tonight to approve resolution number two oh one six dash oh three, authorizing the public nuisance abatement at two two six seven three Inspiration Point. I'd like to, uh, call this, uh, public hearing to order at six, uh, thirty-five. Okay, um, is there a staff presentation?
Yes, we have our enforcement officer, Jean Fochal, here to make a report.
Good evening. I'm here to make a recommendation to the public nuisance on the property at two two six seven three Inspiration Point. Originally, I was called out to that property in June for a green pool. When I arrived on June twenty-third, the pool was turning green. The house did not appear vacant, even though no one was home. I posted the property and asked them to give me a call. I did not hear from them, so I went ahead and sent a notice of violation letter, certified mail and regular mail, that they needed to drain the pool to the sewer cleanup. I also included a consent form, allowing the city to drain the pool for them if necessary. I did not hear from them. When my letters were returned, unclaimed, I made another trip out there and found that the pool was still green. And, um, at that time, I went and interviewed the neighbors to see, you know, what's going on with this property. And they told me they believed the property owner was in the military, that, excuse me, two years earlier, they had gone overseas for six months and that they had not seen the neighbors for a few months and believed they were again overseas and were due back any time. I called Vector out just as a precaution to treat the pool for mosquitoes and, um, I'm sorry. I reposted the property with the violation again, requesting a phone call that the pool be drained. In December, I received a call from a neighbor saying that the back door was open. And so we went out with my partner, Officer Mike Feeny. When we arrived at the property, it still appeared that nobody had been home. Our postings were still on the door. And because we were being told the back door was open, at this point, we entered the property. Up until then, we had only gone to the front door and back. We went into the backyard and found the pool was green and that the back door to the garage and to the house and the sliding door was open. So we called Deputy Rubels out to do a welfare, because we did not know if it had been burgled or squatters, teenagers party, if the owner was in there, and then we didn't know what to think. So we did have the deputy come out. He did a welfare check, said that the house hadn't really been, uh, molested in any way. The person's belongings were all there. It looked like nobody had been in the home for a long time. And so at that point, we could not secure the property because all the locks on the different doors had been jimmyed. The best we could do was close the screen doors and secure them the best as possible. Called Vector back out to treat the pool. Even though in December, we really don't get a lot of mosquitoes in cold weather, I noticed that the pool had been breeding and there was live mosquito blonde ants. We had Vector come back out and I again tried to contact the property owner. We posted it with the violation to secure the property and drain the pool, sent out a letter. Sent out a letter, certified mail and regular mail for, with the citation and the fine of two hundred dollars per our ordinance. And, um, in January, we still had not heard anything from the property owner. And so we requested a public hearing and the abatement of this property. And I'm asking for integral public nuisance, for public safety, so that I can get the pool drained. Now it is really green. It is beyond, or you can see the bottom. Now you can't see the bottom. And the property is not secured, and that worries me. So we would like to hire somebody to come out and secure the property, drain the pool, and clean it up.
Have you checked to see if they're in rear skin?
Nope. That's why I couldn't go out to the bank. Normally, I would go out to the bank and say, "You hold the mortgage on this. If the property owner doesn't do anything, I'm coming after you." But because it's owned outright, I have no bank I can go after. We've tried to contact family members. We've had people checking in.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Who's car?
Whose car was in the garage?
The property owner's. Her car is in the garage. Her keys are in it. We know that because the garage was open and...
So you know who the property owner is?
Yes. We can't find it. And the last time her car came through the gate was October first, two thousand fourteen.
The police department is aware of the situation and they are attempting to make contact and do welfare checks with family members.
And what something could have possibly happened to her?
Well, it is the creepiest, strangest case I've ever had at the green pool, that's for sure.
Now, I want to ask, oh, we need questions at this point in time. We've got to go through the formal process. Council questions at this point in time. I'd like to ask a question of the attorney. Do we have any legal liabilities that you're aware of in relationship to this property or the determining the whereabouts of the missing occupant?
We don't have any, um, legal liability to determine the whereabouts of the missing occupant. And code enforcement has taken the necessary steps to carry out any duty you might have to protect public health and safety.
What about property?
And the property itself.
So do we, we have responsibility for protecting the property?
You have the ability to carry out your public nuisance ordinances. If you fail to do so, you're not liable. But once you started, you need to finish. So you'll drain the pool and are you gonna fence it?
They will drain the pool and they will secure the property. And because each one of the locks is jimmyed, I don't think we would board it up.
Yeah, I'm concerned about what secured means. Now, does secured mean, you know, boarding it up? And if it is boarded up, are we responsible for making sure that it's not on boarded? You know, where is our responsibility?
If it's unboarded, you would replace it. So you're responsible for enforcing your abatement order. What you may want to add is that the property owner will pay for this because the property will be leased for the cost of pumping disposal, which at this point is probably going to be to an expensive landfill, and the boarding up of the property and any temporary fencing.
Okay, so we've put up, we've put up the boarding now. We're responsible for keeping that boarding up forever, if it will, because we own properties.
If it goes to tax sale, either the property owner returns or there's some other disposition.
So, but in effect, until the dollar's taxed late and somebody had it sold by the county, I guess it would be, we would be responsible for maintaining the property.
You're responsible in the sense that you're carrying out a public nuisance order. You're not responsible in the sense you're the property owner. If you fail to fix the boarding and someone vandalizes the property, you're not going to be legally responsible.
That was my question.
You're not.
If it's boarded and we miss a day, reboarding it, are we going to be responsible?
I don't think so, no, because as long as it's negligent and you have an assumed mandatory duty toward the property, you're a mien under California law.
Okay.
We have an ordinance that says the property needs to be secured at all times when it's vacant. And so that's why I'm asking for this, so that we could secure it. And I'm asking that I can continue until the property owner returns to make sure that the pool doesn't fill up with rainwater and mosquitoes again, and that the property stays secured.
My next question is, by enacting this, um, resolution, are we giving unlimited funding against that lien? Or how does that work?
Code enforcement takes the minimum steps necessary to carry out what she's described as abatement. You're abating and stopping. You're not fixing.
Understood. But again, somebody rips down the boards, we've got to go back out there, it rains, we've got to re-clean the pool. Does this cover follow-on actions?
Yes.
See, you have to lean on the property for it to cost.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we never come back for a resolution every time.
There's a process where all the bills are gathered up. If you try to give the property owner notice and a period of time to protest, maybe they'll show up at that point. If they don't, then eventually, there is a lien placed against the property. It's either a lien or a special assessment depending on how they're willing to do it. This is, you guys have done a lot of pools. And often, they're done as summary abatement because it's in the summer and they turn bad really quickly in heat.
The main concern with this is that if you board the property, we're essentially locking the homeowner out of the home. But what's necessary to protect the home and to stop it from being a nuisance with people going in?
Understood. I'm just concerned about the, this might take ten years. A house might be boarded for ten years. And we all, you know, I don't know how long they do it properly. Sorry, I know it's at least five. Four taxes is gonna come into play.
Yeah, at some point, if they don't pay the P O A assessment, I would think that the P O A will take action.
Would we not be able to track if the taxes are being paid?
Yeah, you could track it with the property profile.
I'd maybe attempt to see if the property taxes were paid and it's locked out of the online system. So we would have to actually make contact with the county for that, if this program we can use. Because you might even have it.
Hold on for just a second. Let me get to that. I used the time. Any questions from the council?
No, I was just gonna tell you that.
Okay, without questions, no other follow-ups with the council? Okay, now it's time for testimony by proponents.
I'm not a proponent. I have a question. First of all, is this a milit, is this involved with the military?
The owner has retired. They're no longer in the military.
He's no longer in the military?
He's no longer. He should be retired.
Okay, but does he have a loan with reference to the military?
There's no loan on the property.
No loan? Okay. And then, one of our processes years ago, we kept trying of the taxes. They didn't pay the taxes and then we put the property up for auction. And you go through that process if these people have just picked the country or whatever. But if everybody, if somebody's making the payments, they've got to find out where the payments are coming from.
That's something our law enforcement officers are looking into, to try to contact the individual.
They aren't checking in? Okay.
Any testimony by opponents? Since there's no opponents to testify, there's no need for rebuttal of pro-opponents. Without further ado, uh, call this hearing closed.
But you have to approve the questions. No, that's not the question.
Yeah, this is the hearing part of it. Now, additional discussions by the council on this issue? I would like to, I'm just concerned about the ongoing nature of this situation. And that, uh, that, uh, I don't know how often we have to drain the pool or what that involves or what that takes. But, you know, somehow we need to be able to account for it properly. And we're in a position where we've got chart accounts to deal with this kind of thing. Able to build a specific property.
Right. In the code enforcement program, anytime the code enforcement officers go out to a property, they take pictures, they enter it into a log, and before lien is released, everything from that property, including the hours the code enforcement officer spend there, is repaid. The certified mailings, the citations, and the cost of pumping out the pool or the cost of the actual boarding up.
Okay, so we keep all those records and we've got mechanisms in place to do a good financial accounting for all of that.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments by council? Hearing no questions, comments. Ask for a motion to approve resolution number two oh one six dash oh three, authorizing public nuisance payment at two two six seven three Inspiration Point.
Second.
Remove the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, unanimous, because there's potential financial impact, we roll call.
Yes, we'll project one. Councilmember Aaron Prince?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Zites?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tan Haggerty?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
It's approved five zero.
Okay, I believe that item's covered. Now we're moving on to business items. Item seven point one, award of contract to P T Charles Abbott Incorporated for Public Works, Building and Safety Planning and Engineering Services. City manager, are you prepared to give us a report on this item?
I am. Back in September of last year, we issued an RFP for proposals for Public Works, Building and Safety Engineering and Planning Services. Right now, we have separate firms for each one of those items. We received firms, eight different firms submitted proposals. Two of them were considered responsive. It was Will Dan and Charles Abbott. And, uh, we conducted interviews with them on November seventeenth. And then at the January fifth Admin and Finance Committee meeting, the committee reviewed staff's recommendation to have Charles Abbott accepted. And it was the committee's recommendation that the council also accept Charles Abbott for those services. In the staff report, there is the proposal and there's a comparison on the hourly costs and a two thousand fifteen fee comparison. And overall, it's anticipated that the contract with Charles Abbott Associates will lower the city's total costs for building, planning, engineering, and public works. We have the representatives of Charles Abbott here, if anybody has any questions for them. And we're also available for questions in the council's activity.
Any questions from the council? Okay, I'll just add, um, uh, well, let's move and do this appropriately. Are there any speakers who requested to speak on this item? Okay, additional discussion by the council. I'd just like to say the finance committee reviewed this. We spent quite some time interviewing folks. I think, check me if I'm wrong, John, but we agree with the city manager's, uh, goal in all of this, to have a coordinated services system so that we don't have different, uh, different bodies working in our, uh, at conflicting or not coordinated services. We're moving forward in this direction. We'll provide better services for the, for the city. And I personally have been looking forward to this for some time, so I'm anxious to move forward. Anything to say, John?
No, I just would, uh, second the statement that we met with them as the finance committee vetted them for about an hour. And they answered a lot of questions and very penetrating questions from the mayor. And did a great job. And I look forward to making a motion to, uh, to the council to approve these people.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing no questions are...
Well, I just, uh, just going through some of the employees, I'm not sure I understand their, their positions. Specifically, I was looking at James Barrett. Doesn't he work for us now?
He does not.
He does?
He is not currently with Will Dan. Sharon Barrett is in our Building Department as a permit technician, but, you know, he's not currently working for us.
I hope not. The candle works. Okay, that was my only question.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I think this is one of the most important decisions that we'll make this year, so, uh, if you all take a look at this and, uh, we need to move forward in this direction. Is there a motion to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council award the contract for Public Works, Building and Safety Planning and Engineering Services to Charles Abbott and Associates.
I'd like to second that motion. Is financial implications, can we roll call vote?
Councilmember Aaron Prince?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Zites?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tan Haggerty?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
It's approved five zero.
Welcome aboard, folks. Could you care to make the, it is being recorded, so there'd be a chance to, for people to see it on, uh, on video. So if you've got, you know, thirty seconds or a minute or so that you could just give us a comment, I think that that would be a wise thing to do at this point in time.
Thank you. I'm Jim Barrett, and I'll be serving as your building official and project manager and overseeing everything and working with our staff. Sitting right here is Jim Marcy, and he'll be serving as the city planner. And Jim has multiple years' experience as a planner, and we've worked with him on other projects. Very excited to have him as part of the team. Next to him is Margaret Watson, who is actually a citizen here in the city and is very passionate about seeing the city move forward. And Margaret will be serving in the public works engineering section. I'll let you address that a little bit if you'd like, if you'd like.
Anytime that it is necessary for engineering services?
You probably should get up here because we have a...
Hi, I'm Margaret Watson. I am a resident here. I've lived here for twelve years. Very, very happy to have my company here. I work in engineering, mostly with, um, capital improvement projects and public works as far as maintenance and that sort of thing. So anytime that there is, you know, issues along the right-of-way, that would be me. So, um, one of the things that I noticed could be something that I might deal with is, each day when I drive down Railroad Canyon, if there's something in the roadway, that, that would be me. So, um, in addition to that, I will be stopping by the city on a daily basis. Each day that we're open for business and make sure that everything is running smoothly.
And next, we have Danny Chow, who will be serving as your city engineer. Danny, also multiple years' experience, very customer, every one of the staff is just wonderful to work with and great customer service skills, so we're really just to have Danny serving as your city engineer. And then next to him is our, is our director, Ron Greider, and, uh, he's the, uh, he's the dad of all the shit. Keeps us in the ones. As your project manager, I will be reporting here several times a week, just checking in on staff. Everyone will have my cell phone number. I'm always available. Thirty, forty, fifty minutes away at the most if there's ever a problem. And I'll be working with our staff, just making sure things go smooth, so, um, I went a little over thirty seconds. I apologize.
Well, I didn't want to put you on the spot for a ten-minute speech, so...
Oh, I know ten. Asking, I can talk.
One thing I'd like to request, I don't know if we're in a position to do it right now. It might be a nice idea to get a photo of the folks and a bit of a press release so that you can put the Friday Flyer and let everybody know who they are, what they do.
If we're gonna have ad comments, can I make another one?
Sure.
Well, during the vetting process and discussion with the finance committee, we, I found out about Jim at that point in time, many years ago. And I don't know exactly how many, twelve, fifteen years ago. The city had a problem with the planning department inspections and things and had to make, had to make a move. And from where we were, and Jim came in with a, with a firm and corrected... And Jim came in with a firm and corrected the problems that we had in Canyon Lake. So, I feel good that this man has that concern and that ability, and has done it in the past, and not saying that we have problems today, but I think there'll be better communication and better working with the contractors and the homeowners in the future, and look forward to this association with this group.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is this your phone?
It's beautiful.
I used to do great.
Although, although shopping, you know, don't want to miss that.
Can you take a little?
Of course.
Ready on my count of three, one, two, three, and I think one more just in case. One, two, three, perfect. Thank you very much.
Would it be possible to get a 500 to 1,000-word introduction of who you are, that we can, so we can use it to formulate a bit of a press release?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
A 500 to 1,000-word who you are and what you do kind of thing, so that we can use it to help formulate a press release?
Yeah, we'll put something together, yeah.
Be great.
You can stay or you can hang up?
We're used to people abandoning us, don't worry.
Yes, yes, yes. Just don't lose any documents on the way out.
Welcome aboard.
All right.
Kind of crowded out here.
Yeah, I know.
You can leave it open. Yeah, thank you.
That's a good move there, great opening.
Yeah, I hope, I hope we don't, oh, no comment necessary. Moving to item 7.2, award of fire consultant contract, Emergency Services Consulting International, ESCI, and Cameron Phillips. City Manager, can you provide a status report?
Okay, just to start with a little bit of history, at the October 8th and October 26th Fire Committee meeting, there was discussion about hiring a fire department liaison or consultant. And at the November 12th Fire Committee meeting, staff provided an RFP for a fire consultant. And that was approved at the December 2nd City Council meeting to go out. On December 3rd, that RFP for a fire consultant was published, and it was put in the Press Enterprise and the Friday Flyer, as well as on the city's Facebook page and website. We also sent it out directly to Fire Force One, ESCI, Emergency Services Consulting International, Kelly Associates Management Group, McGrath Consulting, City Gate Associates, Fire Management Consultants, The McMullen Company, and Pacific Development Solutions Group. By the deadline of 5:00 PM on January 4th, we had only received one proposal back, that was from ESCI. That proposal had a 180-day turnaround, instead of the 45 that we had requested in the RFP, and their original estimate for the project came in over $70,000, when we had originally expected it to come in around $20,000. So, at the Fire Department Startup Committee, that was presented, and it was decided that the Chair of the Committee, Councilmember, or, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Haggerty, would negotiate with ESCI, which was the only person or only group that came in with the proposal for a shorter timeframe and different structure of consulting contract. And the result is the contract, that is the last attachment. And it was pointed out earlier that the attachments weren't very clearly labeled, so the new contract starts on 101, page 101 of the council agenda. And that is revised to have three different phases and to have a different cost structure. And if Mayor Pro Tem Haggerty wanted to expand on that, would you like?
It was a very interesting negotiation period, we were back and forth. He was in Washington, and then he was in New Mexico, and I was dealing with some personal family issues, so it was, our machines did a lot of talking as well as us, but I had, the results of a long conversation were that I convinced him that we sent him copies of all of the work. They said, they were not aware that we had done as much as we had done, that we had the background that we had in place, and that was why they had such a lengthy time. And once I went through that, and then I sent a copy of our proposal, that, which we decided to move forward with based on the costs, once we decided that we could afford to do it, based on the information we had. I sent that to them, and I said, "You need to look at this, because I really feel that the time you think you need is not going to be that lengthy." And we started out, they wanted it March 30th, and then they said the 17th, and then they said the 10th, and we ended up with what I had originally asked for, which was March 3rd. And so, from tomorrow until March 3rd, he will begin evaluation. He's going, he's got meetings scheduled for Monday with all the pertinent people, and he'll move forward from there. That information will be completed, I gave him six weeks, which he finally agreed to. And then from March 3rd until April 14th, if he, at the end, on March 2nd, he will tell us if it's go or no-go, and we're assuming it will be go. But we need to notify Cal Fire, so, in March, so that's why we needed that date. Once that's been established, that it is a go, he will start moving forward on the task list, which is attached, and the task list is not necessarily in the order that he's going to work, because I explained to him that, well, let's get the timing finished first. March 3rd to April 24th, he will be working on the task list. And the things that I, on page 101 in B, the things that I felt were the most pertinent that he worked on are the, he would review the job description, having been involved with everything, he would have a pretty good feel of, if there's any tweaking that needs to be done to that. Then he would help us in the process of putting out a bid for a fire chief at that time. Meanwhile, he would begin negotiating the mutual aid agreement, the dispatch contract, the medical transport agreement, and ordering any new equipment if it's determined that we need to order, because it does take about six months. If we don't, aren't going to order new equipment, and he recommends that we could buy newer use, then of course he wouldn't be ordering that equipment, but he would be starting a list of the equipment that we need, and checking to see what the length of time required and so forth. Those were the critical things that I felt would take the longest amount of time, and that he should be getting started on. Meanwhile, we will be interviewing for a fire chief, and hopefully have someone on board by early May. And at that point, from April 14th on, we will continue with the agreement on an as-need basis. If we have a fire chief earlier, then we could have an overlap of possibly with the two, for the two of them to work together and coordinate what's been done and what needs to be done. We can decide at that time if we want to continue. They originally had projected the fixed price per month. I got him to agree to a weekly breakdown, so that, and they wanted a month's notice, and I got him to agree to two weeks' notice, so. It'll be a two-week notice, and week to week rather than month. So, it's looking like probably the maximum we will be paying will be somewhere between $28,000 and $32,000 for the consulting. And he will have, hopefully, completed the tasks that I mentioned in that time, or very close to it. At that point, the fire chief presumably could take over and move forward with the training and hiring, and he would have five months then, if the timing works, in order to get the employees hired and set up their training schedules that they need. Many of them probably won't need training for a while, because they come out with their certifications, but the timing seems to work out, it's a tight schedule, they were a little panicked in the beginning, but once they saw what we had in place, little things like saying, "Oh, you know, we'll have to check with person." I said, "No, we've already done that." And he said, "Well, you know, we're gonna have to confirm that." I said, "We have it in writing." "Oh," so there were things like that, that he just didn't have any idea that we had already done, and that really was able, we were able to get the time chopped off because of that. So, I feel very confident that they will be able, I mean, I've pushed and pushed, and I'm sure that he understands our timeframe and how tight it is. And everything, if it goes according to schedule, we've got some flexibility, we've got two or three weeks' flexibility, so if he needs more time at any point, we have that time. But if it goes according to the plan, we have a little over five months. If not, he will have about, well, be about five and a half months. Otherwise, he'd have about five months to get the training and hiring done, which he felt would be sufficient, and I'm hoping the fire chief would feel was sufficient. So, that's the results of the negotiations, he re-tucked everything up. He just included the task list as they had developed it, but as I say, it's not necessarily in the order, because that's going from scratch with a company, or a city that has nothing, and that started from scratch, and of course, they're not starting from scratch, because we had staffing developed, we had our equipment list, we'd already talked about dispatch, and we knew that it would be probably, we'd narrowed it down, it would be county, and we know about what it would cost, so that's just a matter of putting the contract together. The same with the EMR, that's a matter of just putting the contract together. The biggest thing would be the mutual aid agreement that he would be negotiating on, and then starting up the equipment, so I feel very good about it at this point. Everything kind of fell into place, and they cooperated, and I'm really feeling good about moving forward.
Comments, questions from the council, or, excuse me?
Right, I just was going through and noticed that we may have to amend the contract a little bit, because on page 111, it identifies dispatch, frequency sharing, medical director, regional training center, as well as automatic and mutual aid agreements as occurring in Phase 3. But in the beginning of the contract, we have those items in Phase 2, so we would need to change it to reflect Phase 2.
And I noticed that, I noticed that they did not, he did modify the cover page and did, he worded it exactly as I had asked as far as the timing. And it says term, the initial term for this agreement shall be as follows, and it breaks down exactly what would happen there, so we just need to modify the task to fit that. I saw that, and I thought, "Well, I don't know if we need to modify it, because the first page is really the important one, if it needs to be done, then definitely it needs to be adjusted."
Right, I think that gives somebody no wiggle room to say, "Well, it's listed as Phase 3 here or there," so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Additional comments, questions from the council?
Sir? I have some comments, questions, concerns. The contract, as amended in Part 3, does talk about negotiating mutual aid agreements and medical transport agreement, but in the task area, it doesn't have mutual aid in Phase 2.
No, we just talked about that in Phase 3.
Because Phase 3 is after April.
Well, that's what we just said, that we amended, because he agreed to what is, the timing was on the front page. What he didn't do was modify the task list to reflect that, so that he's going to have to modify the task list to reflect what he agreed to, which is on page 101. So, you will find several things written in phases, because the task list started from the beginning with a city that had nothing in place.
Well, so what we have is a contract with a difference, and it, and, and part of the, part of the thing is the medical transport agreement, and also on page 106, it talks about, determine the most appropriate source of emergency medical services and execute agreements to provide that service. And I guess, a while back, I asked for goals from the committee, and never got them, so, so I guess this meets our goals, since we didn't have any. But I think, in my opinion, that one of the most important things we have is paramedics. As I've said before, and written in the Friday Flyer, fire is not an important thing, even you, Don, have certainly had a lot of fire a year, but we have paramedic calls all the time. And it doesn't seem to be important in this document to look at that. And if we have our own paramedics, there's a requirement to be licensing your paramedics, and that licensing period of time could take up to six months. And if we don't even start that until April, then we may not have licensed paramedics at that point in time.
Can I respond to that before you go in the department? Because that can save you a lot of time.
No, I'm on the finish. And the mutual aid, I think it is very important, and one of the things that they don't, you know, have in here is talking about the mutual aid and contacting Lake Elsinore and Menifee to discuss the mutual aid that we're gonna have, and I don't see in your staffing things that we're gonna have two trucks or whatever to handle that, as backup and everything else, and what's that going to be? And unless we know what the cost of that mutual aid's gonna be, how can we even make that decision in April? So, I yield my time back.
Okay, as far as the paramedics are concerned, John, we determined some time ago that we cannot have a paramedic at Station 60. We simply, the city cannot afford to do that. If we, if we stay with Cal Fire, we still wouldn't have a paramedic there, because they have no intention of occupying Station 60. Their paramedics would come from the trucks that they are currently providing. So, we determined that if we had EMTs on each call that went out, that the call time would be probably, presumably shorter. And meanwhile, EMR would be contacted, and they would be backup and on their way, and so it wouldn't be any different than it is now, except probably a little shorter response time. The paramedics would require a medical advisor, it would require all kinds of things that, oh, would be hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city just simply cannot afford to do. And since we, if we stayed with what we have, we wouldn't have it anyway. It's just, we had to move forward without that. As far as the mutual aid, we talked about the two cities, that there would be mutual aid, but I did discuss it, we didn't put their names in, but presumably, I didn't think we needed to. And that's part of what his negotiating would be. We discussed the fact that, right now, it's life for life, you know, one truck, one truck. And he needs to resolve that, and what would happen in case of a catastrophe? Would there be extra cooperation? There has been in the past, whenever we've had a major fire, even though we only had one truck, they've sent two or three, they've sent helicopters, they've sent whatever was needed, and there's no charge for that. I talked to a couple of different fire chiefs that seemed to feel that that would not be a costly issue, that in most cases, they don't even charge for it. If they, that's part of what he has to negotiate, that's what negotiating mutual aid agreement included. And I did discuss in the plan what the different issues were. So, and they are described in the task list, but unfortunately, as I say, that we agreed on, folks on the front page, but the task list, he did not adjust. I was on my phone, I was out of the area, so I couldn't print my, anything out. I, I was on my phone, I was out of the area, so I couldn't print my, anything out. So I was trying to read everything on my phone and get back and forth with him and I didn't, couldn't read all of the tasks and do all that. So I did the best I could under the circumstances that he agreed to what we have and the task list will be modified to what we agreed to. And it is important. I, I can't resent that you say apparently it isn't important. I really tried, we tried. We tried very hard to figure out a way to get paramedics. That was my goal, was to get a paramedic, but it simply, there just simply was no way it could be done, so.
You mentioned, he, you mentioned EMTs versus paramedics.
Mm-hmm.
Now, so I'm not sure that people understand the difference of what you're talking about there between an EMT and a paramedic. Would we have EMTs as opposed to paramedics or would we have?
Yes. All, every fireman would, would be an EMT. There would be an EMT responding in any call. An EMT can do emergency procedures. They cannot administer medications. They can do the, what's that machine that they?
Diffusor. An A8, an automatic external diffusor.
The diffusor, that kind of thing. They cannot administer drugs, but they, unless the person just had such a massive heart attack that within minutes they were gone, they could do everything to keep that person alive and breathing until the EMR got there. So.
And our-
Which is better what we have now because it would probably be a quicker response.
Are we serviced by paramedics right now?
No.
Yes.
Well, from outside, but not-
From outside?
And we weren't like Station 60.
Station 60, Kevin.
We were not, so there was, there was an ambulance at 60.
Ninety fours has got a paramedic right down the street.
Right.
Five has got one.
Yep.
And all requirements, every requirement will be an EMT out of parameter as an engineer, captain, so on. That's part of the law.
Did we have a, did we have a paramedic at Station 60 or just EMTs?
We did. We don't know.
When we went to this new contract, they pulled the paramedic from that station and told us they would not, they had no intention, if we renewed the contract, of replacing that paramedic, that they would no longer be housed at Station 60.
I'd like to, I'd like to see that document that said that.
Well, there's a tremendous difference between an EMT and a paramedic from the fact that they can contact, they be in contact with the doctor on site. The paramedic can't, EMT can't do that.
Hey, Jack, if you're going to comment, you know, probably, yeah, in the future, don't worry about it now.
I would like to see that document that the county said that they would not put a paramedic at Station, if we paid for Station 60 to be open, they would not put a paramedic on that. I'd like to see that document.
I think, I think we probably should finish with the contract and then as additional issues come up, you can note them for agendaizing at a future meeting.
My concern is, at least in John's mind, I would appear that we're at a, a decision point here. You know, are we, are we defining a scope of effort that we want to move forward with?
That's what the fire committee is recommending, that we move forward.
With the scope of having a-
With what you see here on page 101.
Right, right. What, what we're seeing is that we would not have paramedic service on Station 60. Is that correct?
Exactly. We would not have that no matter what we do.
Part of the contract with them going, with the consultant going through and doing the evaluation is to determine the most appropriate source of emergency medical services and execute agreements for that. So they could bring back a budget to show the city council what it would cost to have paramedics there on fire trucks with the medical director and the additional licensing through the county. They can also bring forward options on what it would cost to have AMR, house an ambulance there that's dedicated to the city, which is a significant cost from what we have been told. They can go back into those negotiations and discuss that as well. So it doesn't rule no paramedics.
Yep. I did have a discussion with AMR executives and they said they have no interest whatsoever in putting an ambulance at Station 60. The cost could not be effective.
Well, I think with the point, rather than debate, those issues, because we're not at that point yet, the whole point of this consultation is to have them come in and tell us if we can get to that point or if we can't get to that point and what our options will be. We have reached as a fire committee, have reached the point that we can't go further with, with our expertise because we don't have it. So we're hiring somebody that can tell us those things. We are not making the decision tonight whether we're going forward with this or not. We're making the decision to go forward to see where we can go.
But the, I, for me, it's important that we're clear that the decision point include an option of paramedic services.
Of course, yes, absolutely. And he's aware of that too, that we, that we'll be receiving along the next eight months, six months, a lot of information, a lot of variations. This task list will have to be very fluid and it's going to change throughout the process. I'm sure that what he was thinking when he attached this was exactly what Don said, was that it's attached at the back, it's what he had, what they had put together. It's very generic, it's going to maybe change, and it's going to be constantly changed. That's the whole point.
With the proviso that there be an economic and practical analysis of paramedic services being provided as part of that, is that part of this, what we would be voting on tonight? That that will continue too?
That is one of the items. And in addition to that, each one of the council members individually is going to be able to meet with him. And any types of concerns that you have or anything that you personally feel is very important to have looked at can be expressed to him to have those items addressed.
Yeah. I guess, let me comment first, Jack, just that I don't, I want it to be extremely clear, you know, on where our stance on the paramedic services. And I would expect that that be part of the results of all of this.
Can you speak, you can comment before, Jack?
Sure.
Can I take your chair for a second, Jack? I agree with what you're saying, but what I'm hearing is that we have six months in which to get all of this done. And I say that we have until April to have all of that information, not months, because if we go past April, we're stuck with whatever we've got. And, and that's, that to me doesn't, doesn't sound like sound management of some sort. And so, so that all of that information needs to be clarified, that that is information to have by April.
It's, it's listed here, John, and you can provide information to say-
From March 3rd to April 14th.
Whether it's stand-alone or tie-down, it's more sustainable, or later than March 3rd. It's the third point in phase one on page 101. If he recommends it, then he will be moved forward with negotiating a mutual aid agreement, dispatch, medical transport. Those are the things that are priority for him to work on from March 3rd to April 14th. So he has two months or two weeks to get that done. And the dispatch is not going to be a big problem. And the agreement with medical transport is a standard because we're compelled to use EMR or transport, but the, as far as the medical is concerned, he will be looking at what would be required. He's going to look at the Cal Fire contract. He will see what they have said as far as what they will and will not provide and what they don't provide now and-
Okay, I understand that. I understand that you don't have to repeat stuff that I know and that's not my concern. And I understand what the city attorney said, but you make a statement that we can't get that from the county and I'd like to see that document. It's not a part of some other discussion. You made that statement that we couldn't have it, so it's part of this discussion. And I'd like to see the document in the county that says that if we contracted with them, we couldn't have a paramedic. So I just want to see that document.
Do we have that in writing or was that-
Well, I think I might be able to, the county will not provide a paramedic squad truck. However, if the city chose to pay the full amount of the contract to have an engine in Station 60, there would be a paramedic on that engine, but they will not put a squad truck with a paramedic there.
Which is a whole different set of circumstances.
And the full amount of the contract would be what?
I'll be with you in just twenty seconds.
Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead, Jack.
A couple of, a couple of things that you really have to be careful of. You're talking about hiring a chief. You should get a chief that is familiar with working on mutual aid connections. Mutual aid is, I worked 13 years in mutual aid and it is not an easy process. We would not be able to reciprocate with reference to a fire or any other emergency. And the big problem I see, and I don't know who told you, it wouldn't cost anything, but all I can say is that I doubt that. Because every time we have a fire, which is not very often, I agree, but if you have a home fire, the response to a normal home fire would be two engine companies and a truck. We don't have a truck. We don't have a second engine company. So that means our mutual aid agreement, we'd have to say, hey, our nearest truck, I think is over here at Menifee. It could be Elsinore, there's one, he's right. So we did one of them. They, they would have to have, you'd have to have some type of an agreement in order to cover our people. Granted, like I say, we don't have that many, but if you have it, you need it. One engine company will not be able to handle a house fire 90% of the time unless you just got a spill fire or something like that. And then our engine company at that point would report immediately and cancel all other responses. That's normal procedure in, of course, in a bid. But the, the main thing that I feel that we, we really have to get somebody, if you're looking for a chief, and this company that you're talking about, hiring, they have a lot of experience with small company, small departments. However, I noticed that most of the small departments they have are kind of out of sticks. And there's a hell of a difference between the fire department that's out in sticks because you get so many volunteers because they're, that's part of their community. Our community has a little problem with that and that's one reason they stopped the program we used to have right here because we couldn't get volunteers with reference to working. The other, the other thing that I see is, if you go ahead with this, and I certainly don't have any problem with taking a look and see what they can come up with. And I assume that from what I'm hearing, that's about what you're talking about, you have some basic, you have some basic things and you say, well, we have, we have information and we already have this and we already have that. But if these people come in, if they're smart, they're going to, they're going to get their own information. They want to know, they're not going to take somebody else's information. That, that just usually don't work.
No, he said he would confirm what we had.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I'm just, I got through saying. They're going to get their own information. I do have a little, I'm like, like John, I have to agree with him, but the time, the time of 180 days, even that is pressing it. But if, if you got them to say, you know, 30 days, 40 days, whatever, and maybe they just say anything they want to because you still have to come up with the information. But if you do hire a chief, make sure that he has worked in the mutual aid program someplace because he knows how to work with those cities. And that's really important. You can't just grab a, grab a chief out of, out of Riverside County or someplace like that and say, okay, we'll, we'll put him in. He's got to have that, that type of training. He's got to know what he has to do. That's, and-
Yeah, we, we understand that.
Yeah, we're agreeing on, we're not, we're not fighting against him. I don't agree with some of the things, but I've got 50 years in the fire service too, so that means.
Well, when I said they would, I was talking about catastrophic fire like our, our, over here when we had that huge set of buildings burned down.
You're talking about our dinner commercial?
Yes.
You had 28 firemen on that.
Yes. And, and that's the kind of thing I was talking about where the comment was, you know, we just come, if there's a big fire, we come and we don't worry about it. If it was a house burning, yes, it would probably be a like-for-like and we discussed that. And there's a possibility, which he has to find out as part of his negotiation.
I think we're getting way off the-
Yeah, yeah, I think you are getting off, getting off of the track on it.
Let me finish what I said, please. Part of this negotiation is if we have to pay, how much would we have to pay if it was our one fire a year, we needed two fire trucks and they bill us? Okay, that's fine. He has to find out that and find out what it would cost. That's part of his negotiating the mutual aid agreement. All of those things will be considered and we're very aware that there's possibility it would be.
Well, the mutual aid, like I talked about, is a factor on the response. And if, if we would send our rig out, we'd cover them on something local, we would be bare, we wouldn't have anything. And a mutual aid setup, you have to have a move-up program so that each unit moves up and covers that area that you're having a problem. And therein lies a tremendous amount of negotiations because-
I'm sure-
It does not, we can't-
With the experience they have.
Leave our people without any coverage.
With the experience he has, I'm sure he's aware of that.
I'd just like to say that I, I blame the Brown Act for this, but you know, we're being kind of left in the dark of what's going on. To a large extent, it's that we trust you guys are moving forward in a positive direction. And I don't know what we can do to, to stay more informed, but I do think that everybody needs to be on board, the community, you know, the council, we all have to be, you know, to some extent, moving in the same direction.
Well, we need the information first. Tonight is a step towards that information. I understand what you're saying, but we only have so much that we, our knowledge base ends. So we have to have somebody come in and help us with the rest.
So you think if we approve this, that we will be brought to the point where we're all, the community and the rest of the council feels comfortable with the direction we're headed?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, but the consultant, there's no Brown Act as far as he's concerned. He can prepare reports for each of the city council peoples, correct, so that they will be kept informed.
They can, each council member can receive information and updates from the consultant. There just can't be discussions if there comes an issue where a decision needs to be made on which direction. That would have to come to a meeting.
But, but there would, there would be more awareness. I've been very frustrated with this because of the way I operate. I would love to have copied everybody on everything that I did, but I was told I couldn't do that, so.
I will vote against the Brown Act if it ever comes from the Congress Council.
Me too.
My question, that's been already addressed a couple of times. Are you comfortable that you have enough time to get this done? And if we don't, what happens?
On March 2nd, I would be able to answer that. When he looks at all of our, and verifies the information we have, confirms that what we have is, will work, and he comes to us and he says, it's go. I would be, he would not tell us it was a go if he didn't feel that it could be done.
He knows our time constraints.
He knows what the time constraints are. And he would be very aware at that point, I would think, of what needs, where it needs to move forward and where the difficulties will be, so.
Well, aside from the consultant, and I know that Taylor's just addressed us that you can't disclose these to us, but are you comfortable that you're going to get this accomplished?
I am.
Any chance you'd be willing to step out a little on the probability that we're going to get this done?
Well, you mean, what do you mean get done?
That we're not, that we'll have alternative to Cal Fire in place next year.
Oh, we're not making a commitment one way or another.
I know, just the probability is one of the-
Oh, what a probability. It waxes and wanes. At moments it seems extremely likely, other times when you look at this, I mean, this bill, and you say it's not as likely. I do think that, that we can reach a point where we have our own coverage and we have some- I do think that we can reach a point where we have our own coverage, and we have sixty open. The main goal, although the city citizens didn't vote for it several times, the main goal was to reopen sixty, have it sixty manned. We were worried about the coverage. Sixty was a very important goal. If we want just coverage from outside the city, we can do that any way we want to and develop it very quickly. Our goal was to reestablish the fire department in Canyon Lake, if at all possible. If we reach a point where we find that's not possible, then we won't do it. But is it likely it's going to take a lot of work, and it has taken a lot of work, but I feel, I will say this, that I was, I was very cynical when we first started talking about this, and I was very, very much sure that it wasn't going to make it. I'm not that way now. I don't feel that angst that I did then. So I, the only thing we can do is, I know we keep hearing the question, do we have enough time? Well, we have to have enough time. I don't think, there's a lot of choice right now. And what we have to do is get this consultant on board to start the late work, to start answering those questions that we can't. And then when it goes into hiring a fire chief, this person knows what they're doing. These guys will get us to the point that we need to, and then we'll move forward. But we are stuck right now at what we have.
I guess my final comment would be, as soon as we're, as possible, we need to address the paramedic issue, you know, in terms of what the costs are, be clear on what, you know, what the scope.
That would be in the second day, March 3rd to March 14th, when he started negotiating. That would be what he would be looking at, the costs and all of the logistics of that.
Okay, all right. I would be excited or happy if somehow we can find out that, you know, rather than just sitting the dark wave at the last minute.
No, absolutely. And it's not the last minute, March 3rd to April.
No, what I meant was, the sooner we can know and come to resolution on that.
That's why I thought for the short timeframe, because absolutely, we need to know.
My interpretation of the voting that the people did in Canyon Lake was not to keep the fire station open, yes, to keep it open, but because of the paramedics. And it was a thing that was clearly there, that the response time, if you do that, it's going to go to eleven to fourteen minutes, and that's outside of the AMA. That's, people wanted the paramedics, they didn't really care about that. I guess the thing that bothers me to a large degree is that we say that by March 2nd, we'll have a go or no go. And that's scary, because then, after that, they take a look at what the mutual aid is, and the paramedics, and the EMS, and all this other kind of stuff. So it's a go, and now we'll take a look at what some of these other costs are. Without that, I don't know that it's a go or no go. So it's scary to me to say that we have a March 2nd go, and then we're going to take another five weeks and say, here's what the costs can be. It's kind of, to me, like, we're going to do this, period, and, you know, some of the discussions that were, you know, we've got six months, we've got all this period of time to do this. Well, you know, the decision has to be made by the end of March, and then we're done.
The March 2nd date for go or no go is to look if financially it's feasible, if our staffing plan is feasible, and if not, tweak it so that this, that our equipment lists are appropriate, that all of these things that we wanted to make sure before we moved forward to develop a fire department were okay. If he says yes, then we have to start the negotiations on the cost of the mutual aid. But we will know the staffing, we will know the cost of the equipment, we will know the majority of the costs. We won't know the mutual aid costs, we won't know the paramedic costs, but we will know what the other costs are. And he who tells us a go, if it's within the amount of money that we feel the city can afford, plus whatever additional cost it is. At this point, we don't know whether, I feel it's good investment to find out before we spend too much more. If everything we have is good and acceptable, and it looks like we basically could go ahead, he's going to look at the city finances. He's going to know exactly what money we have, so, and with his experience, I would assume, if he sees that there's just no way in hell we're ever going to be able to afford to do it, he's going to tell us. If he sees that we can, what the breakdown cost is to that date, and with the money, extra money that we have that we can afford to spend, he'll say, yes, it's a go. We know it's not going to be, he's not going to tell us on March 2nd, here's your fire department, here's what it's going to cost you. He's going to tell us, yes, we say with your finances, you can afford to do it, based on how far you want to go with the paramedics and the other things. And then on the 14th, we're going to have to decide, here's the cost of the paramedics, can you want to spend that extra money or go?
Boing.
The reason that the committee's not meeting on the 11th or whatever it's going to be is because you've done everything you could do to this point.
It's time for him to take over.
Pardon me?
We've done everything, we've done all of our research, we've done everything that we can do. At this point, we need this company of professionals to come in and look at what we've done, confirm that what I feel, because we can afford to do. Even, I mean, I looked at the breakdown, what the cost would be of the package that we have right now without the paramedics. And we can add funds to that, several hundred thousand, and still be below what it would cost us to go from county. So we have some flexibility. That's why I personally feel that we can do this.
I'd just like to say that, you know, we ventured to take on this undertaking, and everybody agreed, or at least I believe we basically agreed, technically agreed to go this route. So we've got to continue regardless of how it turns out, as we're on this path, can't turn back now. I just, I just hope like heck that it all works out.
Well, we all do. But you're right, what are our choices right now? Our choice right now, and we said it when we started this, we have to follow this for now and do as much as we can. We can't keep saying, well, maybe we could have, or maybe we shouldn't have, or maybe we should go this way. This is, this is our path right now, that's what we have.
I think you got, city got the best company for what you're trying to do.
I think so too, thank you.
Any other comments?
They're not going to give us right answers, I don't think, but.
All the consultants, all they can do is make money.
I just consult for many years, and that's about the time.
No other questions? Is there a motion to approve or the fire consulting contract to emergency services consulting international, DCSI, and Cameron Films?
Silver.
Second.
Should we move to the second? I'll, is there a financial issue? Your call.
Councilmember Aaron Prince?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Sykes?
No.
Mayor Pro-Tan Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
It's approved Form 1 with the site's voting no.
All right. Next item on the agenda is city manager comments. Before it begins, I'm just going to make a little intro. I got scared watching some stupid videos on YouTube the other day, where drones are running into each other. And I'm concerned about, last year, we had multiple people taking movies of the parade and from drones. And I just don't want to see those things crash into each other and kill somebody on the ground. Some of them are pretty big, just as a, well, this is, this was crazy, but I saw like a V2 drone flying over the golf course, had to be twenty feet across, it was huge. Anyway, I was hoping to get the city manager to comment on that, and find out if there's any interest in putting in some sort of regulations so that we don't have drones colliding in each other. Any comments to make?
You did my job for me. I was just going to bring up the subject and ask for further direction on whether the city council has a consensus for me to look into drone regulations. I know the FAA just recently required licenses. We'd have to look into that and see what are they regulating versus what other cities may be looking at, and how would we enforce that? So if it's the will of the council, we can move forward and try to put on the next agenda, if not, if we move forward into March possibly.
To tell you a little more background, I looked into it, Ranch Santa Margarita, I believe it is. Was it Ranch Santa Margarita?
It's Ranch Mirage.
Ranch Mirage, okay. Anyway, Ranch Mirage has a drone ordinance, so there is one in place. Their issue was privacy, not security. So there are presences, to the best of my knowledge, and tell me if I'm wrong, there's nothing in place that really regulates things happening in the four hundred feet right now.
The Colorado Beaches bill that would have regulated it.
Yeah. So if we want to try to do this, something to prevent those things from colliding in the air, or, you know, invading privacy, if that's your issue, you know, we have legal authority to do it.
What would you prohibit?
I was contacted by an individual, oh gosh, a year ago, I guess, it was right after the parade last night, and, yeah, because it was a POA parade, and his daughter was sunbathing in the backyard without part of her things, and a drone was cruising back toward him, and he was very upset, and he wanted to know what the POA could do about it at that point. So there definitely are some privacy issues when it comes to drones.
Yeah, it's a new tool for realtors.
Yeah, the Santa Margarita, or Santa Mar, Ranch Mirage ordinance allows for the police and for the realtors to get a permit to do things. What I envisioned, my recommendation off the top of my head, was just a permit so that we don't have, we know what's up there, you know, we don't have flying into each other, you know, there is a greater issue of privacy, which may say that you want to ban them all. But even those places that do have exceptions for permits, in that case, a lot of very strict restrictions, police and realtors who are permitted, but the example is out there.
I think you have a good idea. The one flew over me yesterday, and the silver one went down towards the campground, or not, towards the campground, and what it did, it caught my eye, and I talked to my son, when they cars around, I thought my boy was driving, and it distracted, you know, and I think you got a good idea, Tim, I'll go at them.
A suggestion our city attorney made is we may be able to contact the FAA and see if they would allow our law enforcement officers to enforce the FAA registration, instead of having a separate permit. Something else to consider, this is something kids are doing as a hobby now, they have little ones, they're studying up race courses like they do for our C cars, so they're, you know, a balance, probably larger ones, ones with cameras, something of that sorts, versus smaller ones.
If you're at a park, or you're at a public, on your fire, or something like that, but to be around other people's residences.
Elsinore has a place right down to the stadium, and they can fly planes down there all the time.
I was going to mention, you know, they have to fly airplanes, it's restricted, and then the model airplane.
Same.
Anyway, I don't, is anybody in the council, say, me, want to think about this and bring it up for?
I don't like thinking about it.
Well, okay, we want to think about it, next week, decide whether to bring it up?
We'll discuss it.
I think it's worth, Eric would want to.
Part of the thing that we get into is, who's going to be enforcing it? We have one police officer, and so somebody calls up and says, there's a drone, okay, where do I find it? Driving around, looking up in the air, trying to get a drone to see where it's going to land, and all this stuff. So the enforceability of the question is.
Well, how are they going to get it out of the sky?
Shoot.
We're going to have the Wild West with our officers shooting.
Well, they turn out drones, guns, and, as NRA is doing, looking at that one right now, and their drones have nets.
One of the things, one of the things that, one of the things that I saw the other day, a couple things about privacy. One is, it was on YouTube, maybe you think you're private, and it shows these two guys by the statue, and you think you're private, and then it pulls away, and because of a telescope across, you can see these people doing whatever, nothing inappropriate, but, you know, where do you have privacy, and something like that. The thing I think that's really interesting, just like a short story longer, many years ago, one of our people said, back in the seventies, John, give me some reasons why the auto call offices need to have fax machines. So I said, you know, here's some reasons now, but a year from now, two years, three years from now, there'll be dozens more reasons, and it just will build, and it's the same thing with the drones. And one of the things that I, that I saw is that they'll be more innovative, and one of them is for emergency medical. That it can get from the fire station to your home in less than a third of the time that it takes the truck. It can land, and it could have a connection to a hospital or to somebody else, and they think it comes up and can talk to the individual, have the paddles on it, and could talk to the person, find out what's going on before the paramedics get there. So, you know, it's a thing that's really unique and stuff like that. Amazon could deliver your packages, but they, what happens when Amazon delivers a package and they're not in Canyon Lake, because you have a restricted area?
Yeah. I talked to an individual today, that he has, they're running drones, control them overseas, out of lost space. They're controlling the drones over the fighting area over on the seven. Unbelievable.
The reason I, I just, I'll throw out one of the, I promise to shut up. I have to think about this, and you're being petty here, you know, I mean, I don't like government intrusion on anything, but, you know, part of me is going, if two of these things ram into each other and somebody dies on yesterday, you know, I'm going to feel bad. So that's why I wanted to bring it up. So you can all feel bad together, but we don't feel nothing.
I can bring examples. I can bring examples from my daughter's little drone. Ranch Mirage is the best.
Yeah, when you say Santa Margarita also.
Yeah, right. So I can bring those examples, and then be for the discussion on the council.
Yeah. You know, I don't know if I'm the only one to know.
Well, I'll contact the sheriff's department to see if they, if they have had, how was that enforcement even possible, come through that, or if they have any ideas on complaints for trespassing on privacy issues, and what law enforcement's perspective is as well.
Yeah, but you can do it with your iPhone, so you can make it against a law, and control the drone while you're driving your car.
Well, again, my primary concern is, I'd like to see it's decided by the SBA, so. Any other issues on this drone topic? Any other comments from city? Any other comments from council?
I just think it's going to be a thing the next five years, you will, you will really understand how many drones there are, but they're going to be, I know it's going to be amazing.
Technology always has its negatives. It has positives and it has negatives.
Other issues for council comments? No issues in block? I'm going to say, can you adjourn? Oh, yes, and, go ahead, John, one more time.
Meeting is adjourned in memory of Dan Hagerty, Grizzly Adams, Don, just so you know, God bless you.